Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's good to have everyone here. Next, we would be at approval of the minutes. So I am going to ask for a motion to approve all these sets of minutes, which would be minutes for Tuesday, March 20th, 2018, Thursday, March 15th, a special meeting 2018, a special meeting for Thursday, March 22nd, 2018, and minutes for Thursday, March 29th, 2018. I would ask for a motion to approve that entire set, please.
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Okay, so are there any questions or corrections to any of those minutes? All right, then, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor of approving them signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we would be at correspondence. Madam Clerk?
I have none.
All right. Then we would be at announcements. I'd just like to take this time to thank everyone who went to Galena with us last Wednesday, especially want to thank the parole companies who provided transportation for us. We had a very productive meeting, and Matt did a good job of summarizing everything that happened. So hopefully, we'll get a hotel out of this. We'll see. And then, of course, Sarah has been very diligent about sending out to you upcoming events with the opening of Tower Park, with the opening of the Dog Park, with the kickoff of the Sculpture Walk, and the movie night. So we're a lot of events coming our way, and we're very excited about them. So we would be at trustees' reports. The first is economic and community development. Trustee Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay. Trustee Carter, police.
We don't have anything at this time, thanks.
Okay. I would like to compliment you and the chief in the police department. I like seeing the speed trailer now in some of the neighborhoods. So thanks for that. Can you tell us what's going on there, Chief?
Well, when we purchased that a few months ago, one of the biggest things, we didn't have enough to go around, but since we do have two now, we can have, we put one in the residential, one in the business district. The one in the business district is much smaller, doesn't take up as much room, obviously, so we can maneuver it in and out a little bit easier. But no, we've a lot of good feedback from the community as far as more in the residential area. So it was, it's a win-win for everybody.
So tell me, if residents in a particular block were concerned about speeders, they can approach you and ask if that'd be put in their block?
Correct. We get quite a few calls from the residents and neighborhoods that request a speed trailer. They're probably running into in the past, and obviously, we only had one. So, you know, we've continued for, well, for the last couple of years, they kind of know what the avenue is to go through to get the speed trailer in the neighborhood, and they don't hesitate. So it is nice that we can get it out there in a quicker fashion now than we have two.
Okay, well, thank you. Any questions? All right, we would be at building and property maintenance. Trustee Gett.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I don't have anything to report on that. I just would like to say thank you to the police department and the fire department. My daughter was in an accident this past weekend, and their quick response and help calm things down, I appreciate it. And then, the other thing I can say is congratulations to Seven Hicks, Purio Heights High School. She's a sophomore for her second year in a row of making the Purio Journal Star Honor Roll Track Meet. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Trustee Gett. All right, fire. Trustee Riker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Okay. Public Works, Trustee Harn.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I have nothing.
Just, I would just step in and say thanks to this ongoing winter that doesn't seem to want to go away. I know that the guys are continuing to hope that the warm weather will break out, but they've been busy lately and appreciate all their hard work.
Yeah, a little bit of salting here and there, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Administration of Personnel, Trustee Diane Mariscal.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Matt, is there anything you want to report on? Okay. We would be at comments from the audience. Comments from the audience going once, going twice. Comments from the audience are closed. Old business, any old business come before the board? Okay, moving right along to new business. The first is a request for approval of a computer purchase for the police department, which is redaction software. Trustee Carter.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve this standalone computer for the body cameras that the police department are going to need, and it's just for the body cameras. And I'll let the chief go into it a little bit more detail, but the price is $3,236.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Carter. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have it. Back to you two. Go right ahead.
Yeah, this is just another component of the body camera purchase. We need a standalone computer for all the redaction software, so that's what this is. And this is, we do have the money in this budget for this purchase, so.
Thanks for your proactivity in that, Chief Sutton. We're light-years ahead of other communities in the region, so that's, appreciate that. Any questions or comments on the discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we would be at approval for the fiscal year 2018-2019 operations budget, waterworks budget, and library budget. Trustee Diane Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the operations budget, waterworks budget, and library budget for the fiscal year of 2018-19.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is. Okay, we're open for discussion. Diana, do you have any additional comments you'd like to make before we open it up?
Um, is, are these budgets the ones that we had talked about, maybe Stephanie, including the, when we talked about the garbage?
Stephanie, would you come forward, please, to the microphone?
That budget is the same as was presented two weeks ago at the public hearing. It does include a $10 charge for garbage for the months through May through December, which the board would still have to vote on and approve an ordinance in order to actually act on that. It does include money revenues and the expenditures for the landlord registration program. I'm trying to remember if there was anything else that we had put in there. It does not include any revenues, increased revenues from a home rule municipal tax increase. Those were all taken out.
Excellent.
It does include, I believe, some money for the, in our government all agreement with the school for covering some share of the school resource officer.
Okay, anyone else?
I have questions when we get to questions, so.
It does, it includes everything that I heard the board mention to include and not include. That does not mean that there would not need to be further action on things that are not in place right now. The board would still have to vote to approve or disapprove those.
So how do you, can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Trustee Carter.
So if we're here tonight to vote on this budget, and there's stuff in here that we did not vote on, how do you vote on this budget?
You can make an amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say it'd be a separate vote, that you'd have to vote another time to approve the waste disposal, charging for garbage, right? It's in the budget, doesn't mean you're doing it. You'd still have to, you know, bring that back and vote on it, just like you do for the salary increases, or if you want to buy a vehicle, or it's in the budget, doesn't mean it's going to happen. You still have much opportunity to, you know, vote on it up or down at a later date.
But then, we would probably have to amend the budget, correct, if we chose not to?
Not to do it? Probably, yeah, to take it out.
Because then, we're still going to have that huge deficit without it, right?
Yes.
How much deficit is in this budget?
I believe it's approximately $180,000.
Does that exist?
Yeah.
No, it's not listed. We've changed formats. This is the official format for the actual budget, so now we've changed and it's not listed in these sheets, but.
So about $180,000?
Yes.
So is that backwards? That's if you do the $10?
That's with the garbage charges, that's with essentially everything being the way that we had discussed it.
Is it $10 a month, or $10 a quarter?
It was, it was $10 a month is what I have it calculated at right now.
So it's on the water bill, $30 extra?
Yes, that's what, if, that is what the, so right now, there's a line item, it is line item. It's 4508, it's toward the very bottom of page one, it's under a section called Other Income. It's listed as a waste disposal fee, and it's projected with revenues of $200,000.
So that is $10 a month?
I calculated $10 a month.
How long for, how long?
From May through December of 2018.
And then, and then in December of 2018, it goes away?
It would last through the end of December, and then January, it would not be there. You would still see charges for a while because we bill three months in arrears. So people who get bills in January are paying for December, November, and October. They would still pay $30. The people who pay in February are paying for November, December, and January. They would have a charge of $20. The people who pay in March are paying for December, January, and February, they would see a charge of $10. It wouldn't be until April that the charges were completely rolled off the water bills.
So then, in January of 2019, what happens, goes to come in tax?
The idea would be that then, in January of 19, we would be starting a new levy year, and that in December of 2018, the board would consider adding garbage on to property taxes in December of 2018. The idea being that the board could, since we were charging $10 a month, the actual cost for full garbage is around $17 to $18 a month, that they could levy the difference between the charges that had been on the water bill. And then, when we start getting property tax money in, in May of 2019, we would be able to levy the difference in the 2018 year of what we had not charged the residents, and have money to pay the garbage bills next year. It's a way to ease the transition, to add the garbage to the property taxes, because it takes us so long to get that property tax money in.
So how, exactly, how many months would a resident pay $10 a month on their water bill? How many months?
Eight.
How many times would they pay that $10?
Uh, it varies, depending on which cycle you're in. But everyone would pay a total of $80.
Okay, that was the answer I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I don't understand what you were saying about between January and May, what's going to happen?
In 2019?
Yeah.
In January and May, nothing is going to happen. It's when they go to pay their property tax bills in late May or June, there would be a charge for garbage potentially. The board would have to approve this as part of the levying process in December of 2018. But the idea was that in December 2018, they could levy garbage. We would get that money in June of 2019. And that would be how we would help pay for garbage next year.
So by approving this, are we approving that $10 a month?
No, ma'am.
On the water bill?
No, that will have to be a separate ordinance that the board will have to vote for.
So we're really saying, by adopting this budget, we're anticipating that revenue, but the mechanism in place for collecting that revenue has not been established by the board?
Essentially, what the board is saying is that they are open to the idea of that revenue, that they are willing to discuss it, and that they will consider implementing the charge. They are not agreeing that they will, they are not agreeing that they won't.
And that charge isn't set in stone at $10?
Nope. The revenues I projected are, as I discussed, that does not mean that the board is required to pass it the way that I explained it. The board is open to do whatever they vote to do.
So when would you need this to go in in order to follow what you've projected?
We have actually just discussed that. If the board would like to see a garbage tax, or a garbage fee added to the water bills starting May 1st, in order to get the administrative side of it accomplished, Emily would need to have approval from the board by May 15th, which is the second meeting in May. In order to do it in a transparent fashion, Matt had recommended that there should be a reading of the ordinance several weeks beforehand, and a public hearing prior to the voting on that ordinance. I believe a tentative schedule that we had discussed as a possibility was that the ordinance might possibly be presented to the board next week, with the public hearing being held the first meeting in May, on May 1st.
Okay. You're talking about May next month?
Yes. I understand that it is short notice. That is something that is up to the board. If the board does not want to consider it, then that amount of revenue will go down. It will not be 200,000, and we'll implement other strategies.
Where else can we cut? Any ideas? What other strategies are we looking at?
I mean, no offense, but that's kind of an unfair question. I mean, there's not a lot of places to cut there without having long, drawn-out conversations about cutting services, cutting staff, cutting benefits, cutting, there's no quick, easy answer of, oh, we have this fluff right here, let's cut it. There's not a lot of fluff there. What is, is basically protecting for emergencies.
Be our easiest way to get this budget where it needs to be?
The easiest way to get the budget close to being remotely reasonable is.
Yeah, I don't think we have a choice. I think we have to go through with it. I'm not thrilled with it, but, you know, the choice has got to be made, so.
Well, I think this is our wake-up call. We have, in my mind, we've got all of this fiscal year coming up to work on this, to address both the shortfall in revenue and our expenses. And like most organizations, most of our expenses are in people and providing all of those services. They're in people and benefits, and we don't ever want to be in the position, in my mind, where we have to start talking about reducing people. So I think we all need to be very lean this year, even though we're budgeting money, doesn't mean we have to spend it. So if we can save wherever possible, then we have to maybe have some policy sessions over the next year as a board to talk about where we're headed, but keep monitoring this budget month by month, paying careful attention to it. I'm confident with the board that we have, we're going to figure our way out of this. So anyone else?
So, okay, so if we take the garbage name out?
Yes.
So we're going to add 200,000 to your 180, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So what happened with the home rule thing, if it's dead in the water, or what? Because I missed that last meeting, because I thought we were going on that direction.
So when the board deferred the issue, because of the way the tax revenues are collected, if the board decides to pick it back up again, it would not, we would not be allowed to implement it by the state until starting January 1, 2019. I wouldn't get any money from it until April of 2019, which functionally means that even if the board were to raise the home rule tax, we wouldn't see any money from it in this fiscal year, which is why I took it out. It's, it's kind of negligible at this point of whether they do or don't. It's important for the future. It would make a big impact on next fiscal year, but for this particular budget cycle, it would not have much impact. It's approximately $9,000 difference, so.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm still going on here. So, and then, that home rule, that was 100, what was, 145,000?
It would.
130, 140?
That sounds about right.
Hadn't we figured less than that for the year?
Yeah, it was going to be about 70, it was going to be about 85,000 if it had been implemented to start in July 1. The loss to the village by not implementing it was $75,000, which, that's revenue that will not ever be recovered.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, hearing no further discussion. Stephanie, thanks to you and Matt and all the department heads on your hard work on So Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Okay, we're the, if I say aye, that doesn't mean that the garbage is in there. Just going to make it, I just want to make it clear.
You'll still have a vote on that, Trustee Carter.
Okay, then aye.
Okay, thank you all.
So this was all an.
And thanks for all of your cooperation on this. I know we had different ideas, but we came together, and I really appreciate all of your hard work on this. Okay, so we would be at appointments and reappointments. The council, can we do all these appointments together, or should we vote on them separately, sir?
They always say separate.
You can do them together.
Okay.
Unless somebody wants to discuss one.
Separate, divide the question?
Yeah.
Okay. So the appointments would be Tessie Buckler to the zoning and planning for a five-year term, 2018 to 2023, Steve Cady for zoning and planning, a five-year term for 2018 to 2023, and Elizabeth Kazam for planning and zoning, a five-year term for 2018 to 2023. So I would ask for a motion to approve those?
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Everyone okay with voting on these collectively? Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Oops, Riker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Next is the resignation of Dan Malu from the zoning and planning commission, so I would ask for a motion to accept this resignation.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so unfortunately, Mr. Malu, since he serves on this committee, is required to file an economic development statement. Because of all the business he does, he felt that he did not want to do that, which is okay. He's a very large businessman, but that's the reason he's resigning, so I would accept this resignation with regret. Is there any discussion on the motion to accept the resignation?
So are, do we need to replace him, or does one of these other appointments replace him?
I think we will still need to replace him.
Right.
Does Dave Cady have him here?
He's been on there, yeah.
Yes. Dan was originally on the planning commission, correct, Matt?
Yes.
And that didn't require an economic interest statement, was that?
I think.
I think that's what happened. On the planning commission, I don't think you had to file an economic interest statement.
Maybe because of the zoning part of it.
But on the CBA, you do.
Yeah.
So he'd have to disclose a lot of his business. So we'll have, we'll have to, if you have any name, please, you know of anyone who wants to get active in the community or serve on this, please send me the names. Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll on that.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Okay, and thanks again to Mr. Malu for all of his service. We'd be at treasures' report. Madam Clerk?
Okay, I show in the village fund, the general fund, we have $1,475,942.75. And in the Purio Heights Water Works Fund, we have $526,174.24.
Okay, you've heard the treasures' report. I would ask for a motion to approve it.
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Okay. Any discussion on the motion, or questions on the report?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Trustee Harn.
Does anyone know what our average is in our bank account?
Our treasurer's here, so would you please come forward and answer that, just so everyone at home can hear your answer, please?
Just sort of a ballpark. I know there's no exact dollar figure, but sort of.
Is it a good category or just?
Our general funds, the total for our general accounts?
I'm going off the top of my head here, so this is very rough. I would say that right now, we have been, we started the year, I think, around 880,000. I think we're closer to around 800,000 right now, high 700,000. So, yeah, it's been going down this year.
And the reason it went down is because we, it made up the shortfall for our budget last year?
We had a deficit, and we have overspent this year, so, I mean, we.
Did we overspend, or did we just spend exactly what was in the budget from last year?
It looked like we were about going to, well, okay, so the budget had a deficit built into it, so if we spent to the expenditure budget, we would have spent more than we brought in. It looks like we were, the last time I checked, we were on track on revenues, and it looked like we were probably going to go over on expenditures, so we're going to have a possibility of a deficit ranging between about 30,000 to 80,000, depending on when exactly bills hit. I will have more information on that. I can get you some better figures, if you'd like, tomorrow.
No, I'm just curious. So from last year, we're about 30,000 to 80,000 off?
Yeah, I mean, we had a deficit of, I think it was about 200,000, over 200,000, I believe, is what the final budget was passed at last year. So we did not, we did not have the deficit that we had. This is a planning document. We didn't have the deficit that we thought we might have, because we didn't spend to the budget, but we did end up having a bit of a deficit.
So that's still really good, then the department heads held it down to 100, 120,000.
Yeah, no.
I mean, we budgeted 200,000 over, and we.
Exactly.
I don't want, we can't say we came in under, but we came in under what we actually budgeted.
Exactly. I mean, it's, ideally, we would have a surplus. Everybody dreams of that. That being said, with a deficit of $200,000, coming in less than that is a good thing. It was a good year.
So, but this year, if we just spent what we budgeted, then we would only have about 400,000 left in our, in our bank account next year around this time? Is that right? Or am I?
If, if everything in the budget happens exactly as it is, there's a deficit of 100, I checked, I did the math, Cheryl, I'm sorry, it was 188,000, actually. It's 188,432, I believe.
So without the new additional revenues that we're proposing?
If, if there is no new additional tax for garbage, you can take that 188,432 and add $200,000 to it.
Okay.
If something is charged less than $10, and the month of, the time period is not extended, again, you can add the difference in there. And I'm sure that as the board discusses that, I will be asked to run projections. I am more than happy if people would like to send me emails telling me what kind of projections they would like to see. I can run them this week before the conversations start. But yes, if, if new revenue streams are not added this year, that deficit will increase. There is the possibility, it is a $188,000 deficit in the budget that was just passed. As I previously mentioned, last year's deficit was over 200,000. There is the possibility with this deficit of 188,000, that next year at this time, I will be telling you the deficit is 20,000, 50,000, 75,000. The department heads are very well-practiced at this point at keeping their expenditures as low as possible. But it is something that, as time goes on, and we have these bare-bones budgets that we keep passing, things come up, things break that they have to fix. So we can't count on that.
So I have a question. Do we have a lot of bills that have not come in yet that were in the 2017-18 budget?
Well, it goes to April 30th, so I still have two more weeks. My biggest, heaviest bill cycle week is always the last week of the month. So, yeah, we have some significant bills still outstanding that I'm going to have to pay in the next two weeks. two weeks. There's typically, things trickle in through the end of, you know, end of May. The auditors tried to have me cut it off at a certain point, just so that we can, you know, wrap things up and move on.
So do you accrue those expenditures, or do you just?
Um, up until the auditors show up, which they usually show up in June, I'll accrue them as much as possible, and then usually around the beginning of June, we just cut it off, and if it comes in, it's now part of next year.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking is just so that we're not looking at pushing this year's expenditures onto next year's budget?
Yeah, no, the reports I give the board are actually on a cash basis, so there is a little bit of that in the fiscal, at the beginning of the fiscal year, but the system accounts for both accrual and cash, so the auditors flip it when they come through.
Is there 800,000 dollars in the bills in the next two weeks?
No, no, there will not be 800,000. It's, there's a possibility of, I would say, I'm probably going to pay in the next two weeks 200,000. I mean, I'll bring in some money.
Right.
Um, I don't, I won't bring in 200,000 worth of money.
Right.
But, and that's where you'll see the account start to go down, is because I've pretty much brought in all of the money for the fiscal year that I'm going to get, but I still have a fair amount of bills to pay out.
So with the revenue side of 2017-18, did we pretty much hit it spot on?
We did really well. It's, it's, it looks like we did a little bit better than it's expected, but part of that is because we had the generous donation from the Amdals, and that is offset by the expenditure on the other side. But we came in about where we thought we were going to.
Conservative with our estimates.
Yeah.
And usually, we come in a little higher than.
Yeah, and this is an example of why we are conservative. We came in about where we thought we would be. The state passed a new law and took an extra 10% out of our income tax that we receive, and an extra 2% out of our home rule tax that we receive. I'm trying to remember what we figured out the home rule was going to be, but it was somewhere between 15 and 25,000, I want to say, that 2,000, that 2% cost us. The home rule, that's around 600,000, so 10% of that is 60,000. We didn't see that loss this year because they accelerated their payment cycle. So on a cash basis, it makes us, we got two extra payments, it makes us look like we're okay. Next year, it's not going to look as good, because we're going to have those numbers reduced by about 60,000.
Okay, anyone else?
One last question.
No, good questions, keep going.
Uh, what, when does the, what's the name of that company that's trying to capture some extra charges at Aztec or something?
Azovar?
Azovar.
Azovar.
Okay. When did they start?
Uh, we actually had our first meeting with them today.
Sign that today.
Yeah.
Sign it. I just signed that.
Yeah.
So Sarah and I.
Maybe that will help.
It can't hurt. Sarah and I have a list of documentation to get that's about two pages long. We'll be working on that for the next couple of weeks and get it to them. It's going to take a while. They're going to have to take a lot of documentation and compile it and go through it. Some of it's not going to be fruitful for us, unfortunately. One of the things they're going to look at is MFT. Well, we're not losing money in MFT. We have two gas stations, they report to me monthly, I'm keeping an eye on them, there's no lost revenue there. But things like the cable franchise fee, we actually got our most recent payment, it was about 8,000 to 9,000 shorter than what I'm used to seeing, so hopefully, they'll go back, review that, and be able to get us some of that money back.
They get 40% for two years, that's.
Yeah, yeah, they do. But if it's money that we're unable to find, then.
40% of something's better than 100% of nothing.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
So they'll actually look at every single business that pays taxes into them.
Yes. So one of the things that we have to get them is lists, we're getting them a list of every parcel that's in Peoria Heights, so that they know exactly what our addresses are and what belongs in here, as well as a list of every water account, so that they can make sure that all the water accounts are both set up properly. They're going to be talking to Comcast to make sure that every address is actually being properly allocated to us. They'll talk to IDOR, which is the Illinois Department of Revenue, and make sure that our sales tax is being reported correctly, which we know for a fact is not. But they'll talk to IDOR and kind of help straighten some of that out.